I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Southfield Planning Commission's Study Meeting, August 12, 2020. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper. And again, you have to unmute yourself.
Here.
Okay, Dr. Denson?
Present.
Great. Mr. Griffiths?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Huntington? Okay, um, Mr. Martin? Mr. Martin?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mia? Uh, Mr. Willis? Mr. Willis?
Can you hear me?
I can now, sir.
Okay, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. I have approval of the agenda?
To the Chair, Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
As a move that the agenda be approved, that's written?
To the Chair, Ms. Mia? To the Chair, Ms. Mia?
Go ahead.
I'd like to second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, second by Commissioner Mia. Have a roll call, Jeff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Culpepper?
Here.
Uh, Dr. Denson?
Yes.
Mr. Griffiths?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mia? Ms. Mia?
Yes.
Ms. Mia? Ms. Mia?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
So is that a yes for the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Great. Um, Mr. Chairman, you have an approved agenda for this evening.
All right. Uh, first item is PSLU 20-0010.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're going to do is because the special use in the site plan, uh, involves the same project, um, staff is just going to give a brief presentation and run through the PowerPoint slides, uh, for both the special use and the site plan, and then we can, uh, discuss each of those individually as we move forward. Um, so with regard to the particular project before you, um, I'm starting to run through the slides. Uh, so this is a special land use and a site plan interview request of Kokosing Industrial, Inc. On behalf of the owner, Great Lakes Water Authority, property located 20920 East Street. This is on the east side of East Street between Chiawassee and West Eight Mile Road. Uh, the proposal is to allow the construction for two new water reservoirs, and each reservoir would be, uh, five million gallons a piece, so you're looking at 10 million gallons total, plus a new pump station, and then what they would be doing, once those two new reservoirs are installed along with the pump station, then they will demolish the existing reservoir and the existing pump station. This is a close-up, closer look of the property. Uh, the two existing reservoirs are in the square. Uh, there would be in the upper, I guess, right-hand corner of the property, so there's reservoirs right there. The pump station is actually to the south of that. Property's owned, uh, single-family residential and future land use is single-family residential. Existing condition, this is the gate that would be on the south portion of the property coming in off of East Street, and you can kind of see the reservoirs, uh, toward the back of the property. Uh, this is an image showing both the site plan and landscape plan, um, the magenta color here. The two new reservoirs are being proposed. Uh, the new pump station would be in between the two. Uh, and then the existing reservoirs, I'll show you here in a second. This is kind of a superimposed site plan showing the reservoir locations with the new pump station and the existing reservoir. So you will see that they are considerably closer to East Street than the existing are. And obviously, the reason for that is because the new reservoirs have to be constructed first, the pump station constructed, and everything, um, in line and working before they then do the demo for the existing structures. We have some, uh, bird's eye views from different angles of what these, the new facility would look like, north, south, east, and west. You can see by the rendering, uh, it is considerably closer to East Street. If you look at the existing condition, um, versus the rendering, uh, to the left of that, uh, they're kind of taken from about the same location, not quite, but close. Uh, and you can see that they are considerably closer to East Street than what they were. East and west elevations, or I'm sorry, west and north elevations, and then the pump house itself. Uh, I will note that, uh, in the single-family residential zoning district, we do have height requirements, and the maximum height within residential zoning is 25 feet. Um, the structures themselves will be, and I can kind of go back, you can see, um, let me go back one more, uh, to this exterior rendering. The height of the reservoirs at the center of the circle, uh, is 27 and a half feet. So while it's not a consistent 27 and a half all the way across, at the middle, it is 27 and a half, so we would be looking for a waiver of height requirement for these new, brand-new structures. Now, they do meet all the other requirements, uh, with regard to parking, um, setback requirements and so on, but really, the only waiver that we're looking at would be for height. Uh, and with that, um, that concludes my presentation. Uh, I would like to turn it over to, uh, Dennis Tinkler and his team, uh, so you guys can kind of fill in some gaps, maybe where I may have missed some things, uh, but basically just kind of run through the project itself, kind of give us a timeline, phase one, phase two. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. It's Dennis Tinkler with Kokosing, and I've been working with the design team of Arcatis and Benish to, uh, to develop the project. And we're about halfway done with the design right now, the overall design, and so we're trying to, uh, make an effort to get the design completed this year. And next year, we're hoping to start construction of the center building there, being the pump station. And then the following, uh, year, uh, generally speaking, we'll start on the reservoirs. And maybe a benefit to remember about the reservoirs by building them slightly taller, you actually minimize some of the, what we'll call is the horizontal obstruction. So the tanks get a little bit taller, but they also get a lot less diameter. And the benefit for Kokosing, who's the design builder in building this project, the benefit for that, and then also for Great Lakes Water Association, is that this project will, by making the diameters of the tanks, uh, less, that allows us to really build this facility and be a lot safer building this facility, uh, because there's some, there's some power lines in that area. Uh, we could build it still with, uh, 25-foot height requirements as required by the city, but we would appreciate, and we see a really win-win situation here, to still build the reservoirs a little bit taller, allowing it to not be as big diameter-wise, and therefore, the obstruction is actually, we think, less.
Is there anything else, Dennis, that you want the planning commission to know before we move forward here?
Well, one of the major things that we thought was beneficial in the area, and we really do appreciate, number one, everybody taking the time to, you know, just talk with us. We've had a number of meetings with the planning department, and it's been very helpful, and we've had good review comments and good discussions back and forth. We really appreciate all of the input, and appreciate and thank you for your help. Uh, one of the things that we've proposed and we've tried to do on the project is, we've added some additional colors, we've tried to make the aesthetics and the appeal of the facility a little bit better than what we were required to do as part of our contract. We, you know, we've tried to make it fit into the neighborhood a little better and look nicer. And we also promised to build a lot nicer project as well. So I think, I think even though the reservoirs and the pump station are up closer to the building, um, we've still tried to maintain a nice aesthetic look for the neighborhood. Uh, and finally, I'll mention that by building these tanks and allowing us to build them a little bit taller, it not only helps us build it safer, but it also means we can reduce our construction time. And we're looking to really, instead of having the construction project be about three years, to be almost two years. So we think we can improve on the schedule significantly, and that would really help, we think, to help the neighbors and help the community not have to experience a three-year construction project with the higher tanks.
Okay, I wonder, Dennis, um, part of your presentation at the beginning, you had noted that you're still in the design phase. Is there a potential for this, what we're looking at tonight, to change significantly?
Well, we're, I mean, conceptually, uh, not really, Jeff. I mean, because at this point in time, we're just moving forward, doing some of the piping and some of the elements inside the facility, not so much on the exterior of the facility and the site, you know, the site plan itself.
Okay, great. Um, and the reason I noted that is because when you had said that, I, a little red flag went up for me, that if it changes considerably from what we're looking at and what the planning commission and the council might, uh, ultimately approve, if it changes too much, I'd hate to have you go back through the process all over again. So that's why I just wanted to make sure that if this is the concept, and this is not going to change significantly, we should be okay. I just, we just, in six months, we don't want to see something dramatically different than what you're showing us tonight. We would just be going through the process longer again.
Right. Yeah, no, we appreciate that, and, no, we don't expect that to be an issue. I mean, we've been having good discussion with Eagle, you know, with Michigan's, uh, environmental and regulatory folks, and I think we're in very good lines to stay on schedule, to stay on plan. Uh, if we can get approval with the city, I think we'll be ready to start, you know, early next year.
Okay. Um, Dennis, I know you and I had a conversation earlier about fencing, and specifically the barbed wire that's on top. Um, what is the, what's the plan moving forward? Is the barbed wire staying? Are you changing the fence type? Can you kind of give us an update on that?
Sure. Um, what was envisioned originally, and what was in our, what was in our contract with the authority, was essentially to leave the fence in place, uh, and it would remain as is. And that was our general plan. And the RFP, maybe to clarify that statement a little bit, the RFP stated, uh, that if you don't touch the fence, then you don't have to change the fence, but if you touch the fence, you have to change it out to, uh, like, black vinyl. And that was the only consideration we were aware of at the time. And we've actually planned our work, and we really, other than a construction entrance that is minimal and we'll be able to restore the site exactly as is, we didn't really need to do anything with the fence there that's shown on the, you know, against the, alongside East Street. Now, that said, we were trying to also recognize that, um, two things. One, the authority's Homeland Security Advisor really wanted or suggested, recommended to the authority that the barbed wire fence and the fence remain as is. Um, and so that's just a function of having a water distribution facility out in the system. Now, what we had, what we had suggested as a compromise was, well, at a minimum, we could take the existing chain link fence off of the, uh, off of the poles and the posts there for the existing fence, and at least replace the chain link with some new, uh, black vinyl-coated chain link. And we thought that would also help improve the aesthetics, and, but still then allow the authority to maintain that barbed wire. Now, uh, we're okay to discuss that and see if we can come to a resolution on the fence. Kokosing is, and I'm sure the authority would be willing to work with the City of Southfield and the neighbors, um, but I think we all have to appreciate that, you know, we're also trying to follow federal requirements on, regarding the, uh, security of the site, too.
Through the Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, this is Planner Crowe. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, Great. First, uh, we have provided a decorative, alternative security fence for their consideration, which, um, I believe DTE is using on Northwestern Highway up in West Bloomfield. Uh, and my interpretation is that the, uh, existing barbed wire fence is non-conforming. I believe it's illegal non-conforming because it was never approved, not allowed in residential. That being said, we understand there's security issues. Since this is a major renovation to an existing non-conforming site, our interpretation is they have to conform with our standards. Uh, I hope we can come to some type of compromise. They have the right to go to the ZBA for a waiver, but we, um, we have worked with other utilities to upgrade their fencing, and we're hoping we can do that with this as well. Secondly, I want to point out to the planning commission that their painting of the water towers is going to meet their art requirement. They are scheduled, or that's their proposal, is to meet the art requirement by painting the towers, and they are scheduled to go to the Arts Commission on Tuesday for a recommendation. I had suggested, um, that they include a couple photos of what just a normal white or light gray water reservoir would look like to show that this is a significant improvement, and that we would certainly support their art requirement being met by painting them. So I just wanted to make sure that we talked about those two issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Jeff or the applicant?
Yeah, none from me at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, open up to the commission for comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you might want to, um, kind of do a round robin here, um, and maybe allow Mr. Culpepper to speak first, and then I can kind of read off names as we go.
Okay, that works, Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, I have a few. Uh, question. Uh, I don't think you have a problem with the, uh, waiting for the two and a half, uh, feet, if it's dealing with the power line, but, uh, I wrote down a change thing that Terry was talking about. Uh, the barbed wire fence, I, uh, I don't, I didn't know it was a non-conformist, but I don't think that's a good systemic look in that area to have that barbed wire fence there. I mean, the barbed wire up on top. So if something that we could do about that, I think it would look more systemic and fit the neighborhood better. Also with the pitch decoration, didn't put that chain link fence and put in the, similar to what Terry was saying, I think also would make that area, uh, look a lot better. I do, uh, understand that you need to do the tower. And my question to Jeff West, not Jeff, to Dennis West. Dennis, you talked about two phases. Are you going to build the, uh, reservoir in phase two? You said that's going to be built second. Is it going to be built in phase two?
No, if I may, the new reservoirs will be built first. So the two new circular reservoirs and the new pump station will be built first, because you have to keep the other reservoirs online for the time being. Once the new ones are online, then the old ones would be removed.
Okay, all right. Second and last, Chair, sorry for the long. When you start the construction, is there any means to, uh, the plans to block anything off from the neighbor? So that they go, uh, block or something during the construction? Yes?
So I'm trying to, uh, better understand your comment, to block it off for the neighbors. Um, we're going to open up an existing, we're going to open up and use the existing gate area for access to the site. So the actual work within the site will be very similar to the current route into the site now. Now, one exception to that is when we build the, uh, the pump station, which is between the two reservoirs, we may open up a section of the fence to do that as well. Uh, we will definitely maintain the roadway with some security fencing and some other measures to minimize and make sure that, uh, neighbors can access and move down East Street. So we won't block or interrupt East Street.
Okay. Thanks. Those are my concern is, I know we're going to send out memos to the neighbors, but we just want to make sure that they are notified what's happening, so we don't get a flood of complaints coming in because they weren't notified. Uh, and last thing, I think we are landscaping. I think it's a good idea that you're going to do some of that landscaping to boost that area up, so I think it's nice. Thank you, Chair. I'm finished. Thank you. I'll go back to me.
Thank you.
So, uh, Dr. Denson would be the next.
Thank you. I just have one question to Terry. Um, can we see the, um, proposed fence that you, um, recommended? Either Jeff or Terry?
Terry.
I'm sorry. I'm looking for the photo that we sent to them. If I can find it shortly, I'll send it to you. Otherwise, we'll have it available before you guys vote on the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And Terry, I could send that to you and Jeffrey now if you'd like.
Okay, why don't you do that, and then I can forward it to the commission. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Martin would be next.
Uh, my first question, what is the diameter of the reservoir? You have the height listed, but not the diameter? Hello?
Yep, I'm just, there, Dennis is, yeah, they needed to unmute.
Yes, sorry. Um, I believe we're talking about 200 feet diameter, but I'm getting a text right now from my project manager. I can confirm that 100%. 198 feet.
And on the, uh, on the initial drawing, the current, uh, facility has drainage ditches. Uh, trying to see exactly what they're called on here. You have a bioswale and a sediment, uh, uh, area. I assume that since, that you will still need those with the new reservoirs?
Yes, so the plan, yes, so the plan is, is that, uh, all the storm drainage from the site will go through that bioswale area, and we will provide, be providing additional treatment detention in that area as required by the county.
But, you know, I assume that that has to wait till the, uh, current structures are removed?
Yes, definitely. So the plan is, and we have talked to the, uh, uh, both the state and the county regulators in regards to that so far, is that, uh, the intent is to put in the bioswale and finish off the stormwater features after we remove the reservoirs, the existing reservoirs, the square ones.
Okay. With those, uh, drainage dishes, ditches, are there any odors eliminated, emitting from them?
No, I wouldn't think so, no.
Dennis, if you don't mind, I can speak a little on the drainage for that. Um, it's all stormwater drainage. There's no, um, sewer drainage, so it's all land runoff with it. So there shouldn't be any odor.
Okay, right. One other thing, and this is just for the commission's point, that 90% of the fence line is in the industrial area. It's not into the residential. You have, I would assume, it looks like about 200, 300 feet going across where there's a residential area. The most of the frontage is barricaded at the end from the residential area. And I don't know how many, I could only see one house on the, uh, East Street, but I know on the other side of the barricade and the bushes that there's probably more residential property, but, uh, the aesthetics of it is that you have a water supply system that needs to be protected from anybody and everybody for public safety. So having barbed wire fencing is a must for security purposes, as far as I can see. And I understand, you know, that there's, uh, other ways to have security fencing, but the barbed wire for a water treatment facility that's holding 10 million gallons of water, the barbed wire for a water treatment facility that's holding 10 million gallons of water that residents are going to, uh, intake, it has to be safe. So, you know, it makes sense to me for the barbed wire. One other thing, you mentioned, uh, a section of the fencing coming out. On the, uh, plan you have, you have a, a sidewalk coming in from the, uh, from the power plant, from the pump station. And I just want to make sure you're talking about opening, potentially putting the opening in the fence there? If that is a definite thing, uh, does that impact the, uh, grandfathering in of the current fencing that needs to be approved?
So maybe to explain is, uh, it, it kind of looks like sidewalk, but there's actually a, a new overflow ditch so that if the reservoirs ever did overflow by, you know, if there's an emergency and something happened, the, uh, the ditches that are traveling there from the southern reservoir and going around the corner and then working its way over to the kidney shaped bioswale, that's, that's a ditch, that's not a sidewalk. In, in fact, we've, what we proposed is no pedestrian opening through the fence.
Okay. The only reason I-
And that was requested by the authority that there wouldn't be a pedestrian open.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if I could just again jump in, we understand there's security issues and this is not a normal project that fits neatly into all of our requirements. Um, but in our pre-discussion meeting, you have some type of security access to drive through your gate. The same type of security access could be done for a pedestrian gate. And again, we, we, we can, you know, we can talk about these items between now and the time the commission has to approve it. Mr. Martin, these, uh, this is in a residential district even though, um, there might be industrial across the street and we do not allow, uh, or permit barbed wire in residential districts. Now, they can get a waiver or they can use some decorative security fencing, which I emailed to all of you. And if it's good enough for West Bloomfield and their utilities, we feel it's good enough for Southfield. And we can come to some compromise, but, um, this is a substantial, how, how many millions of dollars is this project? And, uh, it's, um, you know, we, we strive to meet our, our ordinance every time we have a substantial change in, on existing property. So just please keep that in mind.
On the, uh, information that you, that you sent us an email, the first section of fencing is barbed wired, just as a point of information.
Well, and that's, I'm glad you pointed it out, but that is in an industrial area that allows barbed wire. But in, I'm, what, we showed that photo is that we got an upgrade from the existing chain link fence to black vinyl coated with the barbed wire because it's in an industrial district. And that, that was the context of, of sending that photo.
So in the, uh, special use request, are we looking to, well, we're not changing the zoning, just a special use request. So are you saying that on the industrial portion, they can have barbed wire, but not in the residential portion?
They don't, none of the properties are in industrial. It's all in residential. They're zoned residential. Now, what we could, what we might be able to compromise is having the nicer decorative fencing across the street from where the residential are located and then going to a, a vinyl coated chain link fence for the southern piece, which is adjac- adjacent to, but not in an industrial district.
Something we... The businesses, all right, you're saying that, and here, let me go through the current zoning chart.
I believe Mr. Spencer's put up the zoning on, on, on the, uh, diagram. So you can see that the 90%, 95% of the property is zoned residential. And so what we're, we're suggesting is a compromise. There's four residential properties across the street on the northern portion of East Street.
Correct.
Maybe that's where the decorative fence gets put and the rest of it could be vinyl coated chain link fence. And they could appeal for a waiver from the zoning board of appeals for the barbed wire fencing because that is more industrial in character.
Right.
And we're just concerned about the residents across the street for the most part. We understand that we have to, there's security issues, but there's other ways of providing security without barbed wire fencing.
I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I guess by, okay, all right. I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Mia?
Yes, in, yes. Any questions I may have had have been answered. And I also, as, uh, Commissioner Culpepper, I do appreciate the, um, the, uh, landscaping. Thank you.
And Mr. Willa?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and they kind of meander a little bit, so please forgive me. First of all, um, I have to assume there are employees working on the site today. How many people working here today?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I couldn't quite hear the question. Can you please repeat?
I'm wondering how many people are working on that site, um, today?
Yeah, so, so this is an unmanned site. So, uh, we provide security and operations through our system control center, which is located in Detroit. And so, uh, again, uh, all our booster stations are unmanned sites.
Okay. So it will be based upon after completion of construction?
After construction, no, it will remain an unmanned, unmanned site remotely operated.
Okay. Thank you. Tell me, if you did something to this facility, how long would it be before, before we start having issues with it? Is this, I'm just kind of getting an idea, how urgent is it to replace the, um, the structures now? Uh, could this be, let's say, put off for five or 10 years?
Um, I sure, I sure wish it, it could. Um, the existing, uh, rectangular cast and placed reservoirs that you saw on the aerial photo, I don't know if we can scroll to them, but, uh, the, they're rated the worst of our reservoirs in our system. Uh, you can see on the, like on the aerial as we see now, um, they have, um, flat roofs on these structures and the membrane that you put on top of them to waterproof them has failed in many cases. So we have water intrusion to the reservoirs and, and keep in mind, this is finished drinking water. So, uh, the urgency is, is probably one of the top, one of the, one of the top 10 priorities out in the transmission system for GLWA.
Okay. Couple more. Um, when you complete your construction, you're going to move a building from more or less the center of that area to, um, you know, closer to its, uh, one side. Could you tell me, um, are, are you going to do anything with the space that it opens?
Um, I heard everything except the last little bit. Can you please repeat? Sorry.
What's going to move with building over to one side? Are you going to be in position to do anything with the space that it opens? I can use it for, you know, residential or any other project.
Okay, s- yeah, so it's a good question. Um, a- as I can, as you can see from the site plan, the, the space that would be freed up, uh, by the demolition of the reservoirs and, uh, and the existing pump houses, uh, part of that'll be used up for, uh, stormwater, uh, management system, the detention basins. Uh, and so that's, that's, that's an improvement to the site because currently that site doesn't have any stormwater management system. Um, and then the remainder of the site, it's, it's always, um, challenging to try and parcel off parts of these sites, uh, for other uses because you, you can imagine 50 years from now, we're going to need to reconstruct the site again. And so it, it, it's helpful for us to have a, a vacant outlot within, within our site so we can rebuild it and not disrupt the operations of delivering water to the system.
Okay. Okay. Last question. Um, you're going to have some relatively large equipment to do this kind of construction? It's in a neighborhood. Do you have any idea what hours of construction would be when you'll be driving equipment through, um, you know, just a really tightly packed neighborhood?
Right, right. Dennis, can you, can you comment on that a little bit?
Sure. Um, you know, we're just planning normal operations, so, you know, it's, there, there may be some occasional time periods where we have a big concrete pour or some, or a day or two where we've got an extended day. But generally speaking, we'll be working on the site probably from seven to four o'clock, generally speaking. About five days a week.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Appreciate it.
And if I could, through the chair, I believe our normal construction hours are 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and they can ask for permits to work either later in the evening or on the weekends on a case by case basis. So it sounds like if they're out of there around four, they're within our normal construction hours.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So Mr. Griffith, you're the, uh, final one.
Okay. Um, so, just a clarification of, of what, uh, Planner Crowe was, was asking for on the fence. Sounds like the, the more expensive decorative fence along the East Street frontage is about a quarter of the site. And then is there any need to change the rest of the fence, I guess, and the existing barbed wire, um, on the rest of the site? Or is it because you said the, because of the substantial improvement to the, the whole site that it kicks in the full fencing requirement?
Yeah, because this was illegally installed and it's non-conforming. We have to make it conforming. Um, and I, I'm not going to ask them to put decorative fencing along the entire frontage. I think a good compromise would be the decorative fencing along the portion that is immediately across the street from residential and then transition to a black vinyl coated fence the rest of the way south to the end of the property line. I think that would be a good compromise and I hope that we can work together to come up with a solution before you guys have to make your final decision.
Okay. Uh, yeah, other than that, it's, uh, it's one of those necessary projects. It's, I appreciate at least a, a few aesthetic improvements. They're going to be big, big giant cylinders sitting there close, but I think with some landscaping and some, some of the other improvements, it's, it's going to be as good as it can be. Um, it's, uh, necessary, very necessary. Um, I guess that's all, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Then, Mr. Chairman, um, I mean, if, if the planning commission is, unless there is another, uh, commissioner has another question, uh, if not, then we can continue to work with the petitioner on a couple of these items and then come back to you at the regular meeting, uh, on the 26th.
Uh, works for me unless anybody else has anything out further.
So the chair, Mr. Tony Martin, uh, I assume that you're already working with, uh, DTE and I assume Telephone Company to make the adjustments to the telephone poles that you were, were talking about moving the, increasing the height of the pole?
No, we're, we're not touching the power lines at all. So we're, we're staying away from those.
I thought on the, one of the plans it had that, uh, you're talking about moving the height, changing the height of them, but...
No, not at all. I mean, we're, we're all around the site, you, both on the, uh, the west side of the site and the north side of the site, there's power lines. And, and that's our, that's part of our goal here is to stay as far away from those lines as we can.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Any, any final comments? All right. Thank you. Well, we'll, uh, wait for, have you work with staff until the, uh, meeting at the end of the month and we'll, we'll go from there. Thank you. Um, next item, we got the, the discussion on the master plan?
Um, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, item number three on your agenda, there's a site plan for a deck. Uh, the petitioner never came back, uh, with, uh, amendments to their site plans. So it has been advertised for, so we will need to move this item, uh, at the end of the month to the September agenda. Uh, I will have, I've reached out to the, to the, uh, petitioner a couple of times with no response. So we'll see what happens as time goes on here, but we will have to make some kind of a decision on the 26th as to whether we're postponing them to a date certain or if we're postponing them to, um, an uncertain date until they get brand new plans into us. So again, um, PFP 20 dash 0009, um, is not being discussed tonight, uh, but we will have to take some action on it on the 26th. Um, the next item down, number four, is the discussion of the master plan, and I do know that, uh, Mr. Crowe is going to do a kind of a brief, um, intro to that.
Okay. Through the chair, um, you guys might recall that, uh, we adopted the master plan in June of 2016. It's, uh, a five-year plan and, uh, next year's is five years. So we, uh, wanted to have a very preliminary discussion tonight on, uh, areas, uh, that you want us to focus on. I do not anticipate that this is going to be a cover to cover rewrite of the master plan, more of update the necessary demographic information, the land use, uh, zoning information and, um, focus on, um, some critical area, errors, areas. And this will be more of a, an updated amendment to the master plan. That's what our approach is. We'll still re, be required to do our public hearing, public input. Uh, we'll be scoping out a schedule probably over the next, uh, within a month or two, we'll have a schedule over the next year with, with the hopes of adopting the amended plan sometime, um, the latter part of next year. But I know there's been a lot of, uh, uh, issues, uh, in the nation. Um, we've had the pandemic. Uh, there's other things that have come to the forefront in the last five years. And what I was going to ask is, um, through the chair is that we do a round robin with each of the commissioners, uh, uh, offering one topic area for discussion and then we can open it up if anybody else has anything to add. This way we get some input from each of the commissioners. We certainly will be preparing a list of things that we'll be updating, but, um, we wanted to have a, a free flow of discussion tonight to get some direction from the commission before we start our master plan process. With that, I'll turn it over to you if you want to go through each commission, have, uh, offer some areas you would like us to focus on. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, um, Dennis and, and your, uh, your team, you guys are free to go. Um, I still see you're still up on my participant list. Uh, so, uh, thanks for coming this evening, but, uh, you are free to leave the meeting, uh, if you'd like. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, Commissioner Culpepper, do you want to start off?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Uh, thank you, Chair. I don't know how to put this, but Terry, I, I agree with you said, but my thing is looking at the plan, I would like us somehow to look at our plan and have a more, uh, I guess consistency there is that we're talking-
I agree with you said, but my thing is looking at the plan, I would like for us somehow to look at our plan and have more, uh, I guess consistency there, is that, which I was gonna bring up earlier, is that if we have a business to come for us that currently is in non-compliance, if they, they wanna do something to that building, then that non-compliance has to be turned into compliance. Uh, I just wanna make sure that we're consistent in all of our plans that we go through with so we don't get some feedback about we did it for one and didn't do it for the other. And as far as, you know, the overall master plan, I, I mean, uh, Griffin can talk about it a little better than I can 'cause he's been there since 2007. I think our master plan has been put together pretty well. So I don't have any, anything to add to the plan, is that I just like to see more consistency in how we set the master plan up and follow through on each one of the items that we have identified and, uh, have more transparency with it. Uh, that's all I gotta say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dentson, any comments?
Uh, yes, just, I, I would, I would like to focus on two items. Um, first, the Nerf Land site, and the second one is the marijuana issue. Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, Dr. Dentson, I didn't hear your first item.
Oh, the, um, Nerf Land site.
Oh, Nerf Land? Okay, thank you.
Uh, care, care to expand on the, the marijuana issue further?
Sure. Um, on, to, to, Monday, um, some council, um, members wanted to, um, discuss whether or not we should, um, be, I mean, get, um, put a limit on each, um, loc-, uh, not location, but, um, um, Karen, uh, not Karen, uh, um...
Establishment.
No, not, no. Yeah, but, um, cha- categories, yes, categories. And so, um, and I know that, um, um, these, um, the, um, told them what we have, and so I think that it should, it, it will be, um, discussed some more, um, since they, since they mentioned.
If, if I, if I could through the chair, just, um, to Dr. Dentson's point, council did, um, pass a resolution Monday night to limit provisioning centers to three that have already been approved, and, uh, limiting processing grow facilities to three, which have already been approved. We're using the term pause for now. Uh, we'd like to see these, uh, first of these facilities up and running and make sure there's no unattended consequences. And then the council's gonna revisit this issue at a later date. So that did get approved Monday night. So we won't be accepting or reviewing any new provisioning centers, grow, or processing facility. The, uh, testing labs, the safety compliance, and, um, the transport are still eligible for application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will you finish that, uh, Commissioner Dentson?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wow. Uh, Commissioner Martin?
Uh, right now, I, I'm sorry. Right now, I'd like to, uh, take a look at the, uh, the items that, uh, Commissioner Crowe and, and, uh, come up with, the planning department has come up with, uh, looking at, and just see if there's any other things that I noticed that we might wanna pay attention to. I haven't, uh, the, uh, the master plan, we're just making sure it's identifying the subject area at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mia, any comments?
Can you hear me?
I'm sure she's there. Uh, now we can.
Oh, okay. No, I, I have none.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Willis?
Uh, my idea is probably, uh, how do you support the neighborhoods? Um, I, I don't know what structures we have in place. One of the things I'm beginning to see is a neighborhood president. One of the things that I'm beginning to see, it's more and more difficult for neighborhood organizations to be present. As a result, islands seem to be falling into disrepair, um, you know, uh, uh, subway entrances are getting to be a little shabby. So somehow we need to build a structure to allow for greater support of the neighborhood. That's my only one.
Okay.
For the chair, Mr. Willis?
Yep.
Mr. Willis, turn your volume down just a little bit, 'cause you're too minute distorted, and I think your volumes are too high.
Okay, thank you.
Could you repeat what you just said, though, as you're...
Uh, I, I have to do, my idea is to find a way to support the neighborhoods. Um, the subdivisions are having difficult times supporting the roundabouts that's going to contain the entrance areas are getting shabby. Um, and so with all of the things going on, I think we need to make it part of this city structure to then support the neighborhoods. Um, and I think incoming groups tend not to be as neighborhood focused with the people here in places. I hope you can hear that.
Uh, slightly better. Not, not great, not perfect.
Uh, if I could through the chair, I heard support neighborhoods, um, the subdivisions are struggling with maintaining their entranceways and some of the green space within there. So I got the gist of that, and I think we could come, come together. As you recall, we did a extensive study of gateways and entranceways just pre-COVID. That, um, the funding that we had requested from council got pulled. But, uh, we certainly can, uh, have a focus in the upcoming master plan on, on things that we can do to better enhance and support the neighborhood. And then the funding will be the challenge after that, but we certainly, uh, have a lot of good ideas from other communities that we can incorporate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, my, uh, my, my goal for the master plan, I guess, always is to continue more mixed-use development. That's a lot of things changing right now with the, the way, uh, the way the world has been the last few months. Uh, I think we're gonna see some, some trend away from density, but I also think we still need to keep moving towards, towards the density that we've been, um, gaining recently in this city because the city was so spread out. Uh, there's a huge amount of single-family homes. That's not gonna go away anytime soon, but still need to keep this, this focus on more mixed-use sites and different types of housing and, you know, close to, closer-together housing, but there, there's a big discussion of how close is too close now with, with all the COVID effects lately. So I, I think there's been a positive trend in, in the way that some of these buildings are being reused in the city. As long as we, we keep moving, uh, with the times on that, that's, it's gonna be an interesting discussion for the next five to 10 years.
Okay, well, unless there's any other comments, you guys certainly could email me. Um, I, we, we don't wanna prejudice, um, the direction. So we will compile the list that you've given us with our own list, and we will be having, uh, future discussions on this. And we'll probably start, um, right after Labor Day, we'll probably start utilizing that third planning, planning study session that, that we can just focus on the master plan as needed. Um, so our goal between now and then is to come up with the schedule, come up with a list of priorities, come up with some inventory, and some data points, uh, to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I guess just, um, piggyback on that. It's, it's, it's good to see after being here for 10 years, you know, seeing that, or being on the commission for 10 years, being in the city for 20 years, that things in the master plan are actually getting integrated, and it's exciting. You know, a lot of times you see the master plan at the beginning and you wonder if, if any of it's gonna come to reality. It's, I think there's been a lot of positive movement in the last 10 years that, that I've been involved, so it's good to see it.
Well, I, if, to your point, um, as part of an exercise that we're required to do with our redevelopment-ready certification, we were very ambitious five years ago, and we came up with twen- 235 tasks. And we can say that, uh, probably 230 of them either, either have been completed or substantially completed or being worked on. And that's one of the data sets that we will share with you at a future point. So, um, we, uh, because we were intimately involved in preparing the master plan, we've been intimately involved in the implementation of various pieces that are under our control. And, uh, I'm very proud of the work that we've done collectively to achieving, um, those goals. I will say that I, I won't be as ambitious of, um, giving us another 235 tasks to do this year. Um, but we will continue to focus on the priorities of the city, uh, during these changing times. And, uh, it's amazing, when I started my career 33-plus years ago and how, uh, fluid we always have to be and how, I mean, this pandemic came out of nowhere, uh, and it's really changing, uh, the way we're thinking about everything from office to housing, to public gathering, to restaurants, and so forth. So we, we gotta always continue to be nimble and fluid and try to anticipate what the next big thing is coming down the pipe. So it should be, uh, it should be another exciting process.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you. Uh, next, we have, uh, the public comment section.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the screen right now is the, uh, the telephone number as well as the event code, um, that the public can punch in, uh, in order to, to make some public comment. Uh, we'll wait for a couple of minutes here, uh, give the public the opportunity to, to call in, uh, and I will follow up with you in, in a couple of minutes.
To the chair, I assume, uh, that we don't have a meeting scheduled for next week?
If, if, if I may through the chair to Mr. Martin, um, that's a decision yet to be made. Um, Mr. Chairman, I can say at this moment that we do not have any public, uh, who have called in at all. So, uh, if you can close that portion of the meeting, uh, then we can move on to the miscellaneous items and I can, we can discuss the next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you. The public comment section is now closed. Um, I guess we have minutes and then miscellaneous. If there's no minutes, uh, move on.
Yeah, no minutes, yes, no minutes to, to, to provide. Yeah, with regard to, um, next week's meeting, um, it is on a calendar. We do have a long-range meeting. It's scheduled for the 19th. Um, currently, staff doesn't have, uh, any items to, to bring forward to you. So really, it's in the hands of the commission as to whether or not you believe you need a meeting on the 19th. If not, then it can be canceled, and then we'll see you on the 26th.
I don't see any reason to have the meeting next week. Anybody else feel differently?
I could point us to, this is Rob Willis. I can agree with the chair. Commissioner Cole Pepper?
Dentson, I'll just stick out, um, the, the last meeting of the month.
Okay. Sounds like a majority of us today. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, there's nothing more from staff. Again, just to say that, you know, you do have your regular meeting scheduled for the 26th.
Okay, sounds good. We will, uh, talk to you then. Um, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.